This is Barudy Carl Alexander with Councilmember Letitia Plummer. I am so gratified, appreciative, and very thankful. Thank you very much. We met in the studio a few years ago. I think it was about three years ago.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think I think it was longer than that. I think we met in 2018. We met when I ran for Congress.
Yes, and Ms. Bell was with you?
Yes, with my good friend, Adrian Bell.
And she was running for Congress also, I believe, at the time.
Yeah, she sure was. Yeah, she sure was.
Yes, and that was a good occasion. We had a good political conversation and we got to know each other a little bit. It was a good occasion. Has politics per se changed since that time?
Oh, absolutely. I think that, yeah, that was a really pivotal moment, I think, in politics. You know, it was when people that weren't necessarily politicians ran for office. It was a time when Beto just had just the energy going in terms of running for Senate. It was a time when what a politician looked like changed and women in politics skyrocketed. So it was a really great time. I was so honored to be a part of that movement. And I think it's a lot of the reason why you see so many women that are active in the political space now.
You speak of a movement. Would you say Ocasio-Cortez is a leader in that movement as well as maybe the squad members? Are they leaders of that particular movement?
They're leaders of the movement, but they're definitely a part of it because they were a part of that 20, that 2018 run, right? I mean, they were the ones that won through what happened. And so I think they're a part of it. I think that a lot of times, you know, in every space, in every political, you know, on the spectrum, let's just say, from red to blue, there are people that became elected officials that probably wouldn't have been elected officials more traditionally.
So I got a lot of questions, but I
Yeah, no, I'm all here. I'm all yours. I'm excited.
I want to come back to that because you said the climate kind of changed. If I'm understanding, more women got involved and would you say more non-traditional candidates, LGBT, different type of candidates got involved at that time too? And do you think that Trump being in office has something to do with this?
You know, I think he was a part of it, right? I mean, that's that. And that's what I mean, from the spectrum, from red to blue. Everyone that was not normally a politician had a voice. And it went from the progressive to the conservative spectrum. And so it really kind of included everybody. I mean, you know, regardless of what side you align yourself with, it was a time in which people that weren't your average politicians really got out there and won these seats. And we didn't, we've never seen, we've really never seen that before. And so that's what I mean about the movement.
I kind of want to share that what happened, I believe, during that time was Trump was a kind of crisis president because people on both sides got kind of fearful as to what might happen. Those who were, quote, on the left, they feared what Trump may do i- if he continued in power and so forth, as well as the MAGA crowd was so afraid that they went to the Capitol and we know what happened in that particular occasion. Let me share this with our audience who may not be aware. You're running for city council of Houston, Texas, correct?
Yeah, I'm your current at-large city council member, so I
So you're running for reelection?
I am running for reelection. Yes, you got to be real specific about that, my friend.
Okay.
I want four more years.
Yes, very much so. And the election is on November the 7th?
Yes, election's on November the 7th.
Okay.
And I'm running, and I am currently an at-large foremember for the city of Houston, which means I am the entire city. So if you've got a Houston zip code or if you're an area that's incorporated or you vote for the mayor, then I am on your ballot.
How many council members are there? How many at-large members are there?
Okay, so there are five at-large members. So and three of them are open. Then we've got district members as well. And so the district members have specific regions, whereas at-large members have the whole entire city. And there, I think there are three open seats for at-large, and I'm not sure. We have six open seats for the district members, I believe. But it's going to be an exciting, exciting election. Obviously, as you know, the mayor's and open mayor's race, so open seat this election cycle. So it's going to be a good, exciting time, and I'm glad to be on the ballot.
I want to share a disclaimer. On the last two elections, I was an election judge as well as an assistant election judge. So I share that. So they say I got to kind of be neutral, but between me and you, I'm not neutral. I'm for you, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So the climate in Houston is
Yes.
a little different than the climate in Texas as a whole. This is a red state. Houston has some red parts, but it's more purple. And I'm using all these color analogies, blue with, you know, maybe a mix of red in and so forth. What is the demographics of Houston? Are you, do you know that to a certain extent?
You know, interesting, interestingly enough, it's almost a little balanced. I mean, the Hispanic population definitely is leading in terms of, in terms of numbers, based on the census numbers. African Americans are about 22, 23%, about 26% white. And a little bit under 50% Hispanic, and then the rest are
Did you say 50%?
A little bit under 50%, about 48%, 47% Hispanic, and then everything under that is pretty much your your Asian, you know, your Asians and your other population groups. So black, black and whites are really kind of almost neck and neck. And from a percentage perspective, and then, like I said, your Hispanic population's in that 40 to 45 range. And then you've got, you know, 6%, 7% other. And you know, as you know, we just redistrict. A lot of our districts have been redrawn, a lot of the the lines have been redrawn in terms of districting, which has definitely shifted how some political spaces look like. But we're still, you know, the county itself, Harris County, is democratic. We are blue in every, really, every sense of the word. Houston is not as blue as the county, but it is definitely bluish-purple. Right? If you can kind of see that perspective. I love your analogy. I feel I'm purple in many ways. You know, I kind of focus on issues and, and, you know, I really look at finances solidly because I'm a business owner. But I also look at social justices and making sure that there's equity, you know, in place too. So I kind of feel like I'm very purple in a lot of ways. But yeah, that's kind of the layout of what the city looks like. And what people really, what I really want people to know is that municipal government, you know, there is, there is an item that is being signed probably by the governor that's going to limit the power that municipal governments have. But right now, knowing your local officers, especially during an election year with so many open seats on council, I really encourage people to read and research, you know, who your candidates are. It's a nonpartisan race, but there's still partisanship about them. And so really kind of get an understanding of who your candidates are during this election cycle. In addition to, obviously, your controllers' race and then your mayor's race as well.
Let me ask, what is your prognosis in your race? Or let me ask it like this, are you running against anybody that you have ran against before? I've seen some of the signs out there. I know some of the people who are out there also. So what do you feel? How's your race going?
You know, I am, I have done a great job on council. And I have to say that because as a first-time elected official that got hit in COVID, six months into being elected, we've done some really amazing things. And so I do have two opponents. They're both on the conservative side. I do have two opponents, but I am very confident. We have, I'm running on my record. And I really welcome anyone that's watching, please go to our city council website. I've got my newsletters there, all the great work that we've done. If you can see the work that we've done in the space of housing and justice, in the space of mental health support when it comes to public safety, food insecurities, the economic, the economic crisis that we saw was very, very involved with making sure that small businesses got micro lending and small loans that they deserved. And so I'm working on environmental justice in terms of communities, primarily of color, BIPOC communities that are dealing with either air pollution or the creosote, ground pollution in the groundwater. So we've done some really amazing things in this, in this race, and I'm a policy writer. And so really looking at policies that can, that can cause change and actually allow families to to be able to thrive in our city.
You, you mentioned economics. How does that come about? Economic zones? I'm interested in economic development. I'm retiring. I got a little nest egg. I got ideals. Matter of fact, this show right here, I would like to make it bigger and take it to the community a little bit more. What economic development type of things do, does the city have available?
So we don't really, we don't, they are, there are areas where there could be investments and savings. So one of them is, for example, affordable housing, right? Anyone that's looking at building affordable housing, we have a 9% credit that we, that we work with the city. That's just kind of one space where you can get a benefit from a tax, a tax benefit. And, but you have to commit to buildings, you know, affordable housing, right? But in terms of other economic investments, you know, the city of Houston really doesn't manage that or run that. A lot of that's done by your management districts, your churches as well, you know, look at that. But, but in terms of economic drivers, you know, the city really, most of our, most of our economic drivers or equity in terms of involvement financially is really in procurement in our, in our public works department procurement and really getting of the Office of Business Opportunity. So getting, being a minority vendor and learning the trade and learning how to be a vendor with the city and get engaged with the city. Those are really probably the two primary ways in which you're able to win economically by doing business with the city.
Okay, I'm gonna check that out as well as kind of publicize that a little bit.
Yeah.
I want to ask about a big thing that happened recently and what should come in on this. The HISD takeover. I know that you're not directly involved, but peripherally, you're involved.
Yes, the city of Houston has no guidance over the HISD at all, right? We, we're a completely separate entity. So, yeah, I mean, the takeover has happened. I think they announced today who the management council is going to be. I believe the superintendent has been announced as well. I think it just came out today. And so, yes, unfortunately, it's happening. It's definitely happening. And what that's going to look like and how that changes the trajectory in terms of how education is dealt with in the city of Houston is going to be interesting, and I will be watching it very, very closely. But that is something that the city of Houston, as a municipal council member, as someone that makes decisions in terms of municipal government, that's something that I am not up for yet.
But my next question goes into that. School shootings, fortunately, blessed, we haven't had one here. However, we've had one close in Uvalde. And that, as a teacher, that's always a concern. I tend to think that, you know, the building itself shouldn't be just right next to the street. You should have to go through some type of station before you can be able to go in there. I know that that would, you know, cause a little restriction, but for the safety of our kids, I think some of these things need to be looked at from a safety policy. Do you all have, share any opinion? And does that come up?
No, unfortunately not. I mean, that is definitely a state issue. That is something that is mandated by our, your state representatives, your state senators, and then obviously the governor. And so, no, unfortunately, we don't have any guidance over that either. We are, we are ordinance writers. That's what we do. So we are, we are the ones that manage anything dealing with public safety. We are doing that. Anything dealing with laws, for example, we just passed a noise ordinance. When people are doing business in the city of Houston, how does that happen? We're talking about city planning, where a house should be built, or how it should be built, or what a sidewalk should look like. That's a part that we write, that that's something that we have influence over. We have a permitting department in terms of what can be built in a certain area. You know, what do bike lanes look like? Those are things that we're a part of and we make decisions on on a daily basis. And then obviously as well, we are responsible for, although the airport is an enterprise fund, so it doesn't come out of our $6.2 billion budget, it's a part of the budget, right? It's not a part of our general fund. It's an enterprise fund, but we still vote on the items that come in front of us.
Understood, understood. That is a lot, and the, the city keeps everything going and makes sure everything is fair. That's kind of the way I look at it to a certain extent.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Now
Nationally.
Okay.
The outlook. You have Biden on the one hand, you have Trump, Tim Scott, DeSantis. What do you think that climate is going to end up being and how is that going to affect, you know, the climate, the citizen, excuse me, the citizens, I'm messing up that word, the citizens? How are we going to get caught up or look at it from a national perspective? What is it going to look like? That's what I'm trying to say.
Sure, sure. That's a great question, Carl. So national typically issues that are dealt with nationally, sometimes they overflow in municipal government. I'll give you a perfect example. Public safety is something that people are looking at nationally, but they're also looking at it. They're also looking at it locally as well. Flooding is something that is primarily something that Houston deals with. It's not really a national issue. And so what people often do is they get confused about national issues and local issues. They're very different, right? Now, we do have, we do have the infrastructure relief fund, right? That we're looking at right now. That money, that infrastructure money will, you know, dwindle down into the, into our municipal governments and make sure that we get some of those monies. They'll come through our congressional members. But those are monies that are coming to us. But in terms of issues nationally and locally, they're often very, very different. And, and so really want people that are listening today, I really want people to understand there is a, there is a clear distinction between what we talk about at a national level and what we talk about locally.
But a question, you work with the county and Judge Adal, Adal, I think says, that's how you pronounce her name?
Yes, now we're different, we're different entities, different, you know, governmental bodies. We are inside of the county. So I'll give you an example of one thing that we work together on. We work together on flood mitigation because Harris County Flood Control District, right? And looking at our public works and how we build infrastructure to make sure flooding doesn't happen. That is something we work together. Our healthcare system is something that we're really trying to align with and work together on. So there's some things that, that we do work together on from the county and the city. But we are separate governmental bodies, separate budgets. The dissemination of dollars is separate, but we are very good partners.
Well, that is great. We would like you all to work together so, for our benefit and to make, help make everything smooth.
Yes, absolutely. And especially in the flood space. I mean, we really are working well together in terms of flood mitigation. I'll give you a case in point. The Houston Area Galveston Council, the money that they receive for flood mitigation, that money went directly to the county. So it's really going to be important for the city of Houston to work closely with the county to share what areas are we having problems, so they can invest those dollars into those areas. And that's a, that's, that's just one example of how the city and the county really, it's important and really critical for us to work together because oftentimes money does come down from the state to the county versus coming down from the state to the city.
So tell me the secret. Who, who are you running for for mayor? Or who are you? Sheila?
Oh, I, I don't have, I, unfortunately, I'm not getting involved in any of the races. Like I mentioned to you before, I've got potentially a tough race in front of me myself. And so I'm going to focus, really focus on making sure that our message gets out, people know the good work that we've done, and make sure that I get the support that I need to win, to win and serve my community for four more years.
So let's say everything happens like we planned it. You win that position. So is the state the next?
You know, I, I don't have any aspirations. I, I want to focus on what's in front of me.
So what, what made you run for office in the first place?
That's an interesting story. So in 2018, I actually had a personal issue. I lost custody of my son in a surrogacy, in a surrogacy battle and was devastated. And so I, in my grief, I looked at how the code was written at the state and why there were no protections for people that were not biologically linked to, to, to a child. And we're called the intended parents. And I realized that there was no law that protected, if a divorce were to happen, there was no law to protect the intended parent. That child, in my mind, Alex is my son, right? Regardless of, I've seen him, I haven't seen, he's eight years old now. I've never seen him since he was three months old. But in my mind, and you can never tell an adoptive parent that's not their child. I mean, that's their kid, right? And so I looked at the family code and there was nothing there. It was like the surrogacy in Houston or in Texas is legal. There's certain protocols you have to follow, but there was nothing there that had anything to do with if for some reason the couple doesn't survive, what happens to that particular child. And so I wrote the legislation to fill that gap, basically. And, and my legislation passed unanimously in the House and the Senate in 2019. And that's really what got me involved in politics. I lost the first time in that first legislative cycle. I lost by a couple of votes in the Senate. And, and then, and then we, I got it back on the, you know, back to build, you know, up again. And in 2019, actually, the same year that I won for council, my, my bill passed. And so, so now families that want to create their families in different ways, they can now. And they don't have, and they're, and they're protected.
Well, such an interesting story. Go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, and that's how I got involved with politics. It was not retroactive in my particular situation. And as I mentioned, Alex now, actually, on the 18th, will be nine years old. And so, and so we'll never have, I'll never, it was not retroactive, but I just never wanted anyone to experience the grief that I experienced at that time in my life.
So it was very personal and very passionate, and you said, okay, I want to get involved. Can't change the past for your future, but you can help somebody else.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Very, very interesting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And then that's how I got in. I got, you say I got bit by the bug, girl.
So have you started meeting some interesting people along the way in politics? In your duties, do you get a chance to travel? Is that a part of it sometime? Or basically you stay right here? And aren't you in line for mayor? If something happened to the mayor, doesn't it go in the line of succession?
No, not so, so not, so let me back up just a little bit. So I think you're referring to if something, God forbid, but if something happened in there now, who would take his position? Is that what you're saying? Because no, I know, it would be, it would be Mayor Pro Tem. And so there's a mayor and this kind of, there's a mayor pro tem and there's a vice pro tem. And so Mayor Pro Tem is Dave Martin. He's
And they, they are not, they are not council members, but that's their actual
No, they are council members.
Okay, well, okay.
Yeah, uh-huh. And so he would have taken that position, but you know, if something were to happen, but you know, God's graces over our mayor, so nothing's going to happen. But if he, if something were to happen, the mayor pro tem would take that, would take that position temporarily. And then we would, you know, work out what the details would look like. In terms of my travels, so I'm not sure if you know this or not, but my background, I have a very, you know, deep international background. My mom is Yemen and Persian, and my, and my father is African American. And so I have lots of family overseas. And so one of the, one of the issues that I want to tackle when I became in office was how do we create some liaisons between us and international, and the international world? And so Abu Dhabi in the United Arab Emirates is a sister city for the city of Houston. And so it has been dormant for 20 years. And I took it upon myself to really reach out across the waters and really engage. And so I've actually been to Dubai three times now, and we're working really closely on some amazing projects. Because there's so many similarities. They lead in healthcare like us. They lead in trade and port like us. They lead in oil and gas like us. And so there's so many similarities in terms of what they do there. And so, yes, I am working internationally with the United Arab Emirates to see how we can work better together and how we can bring some economic development here and also there.
Very interesting. So many things going on. City council kind of moves the flow of the city. Have you been surprised that some of the internal politics and then some of the constituency that comes before you?
Yeah, I have. No, I come from the private sector, so I'm still practicing dentistry. It was time to step back a bit, and so now I'm only there three days a week, which is really nice. I've got a great team that's there because I've been practicing almost 25 years now. And so it was time for me to step back just a hair. And so I come from the private sector, right? And, and I often use this analogy. If a patient comes in to me and says, my tooth is hurting, I can't say, oh, well, we'll fix it in two years. Let me figure out what I can do and we'll figure it out. I can't do that. I've got to fix, I have to listen to my patient. I have to come up with solutions, multiple solutions of what options are. I have to deliver that to the patient, explain it to, in a way that they understand, and assist them in making the best decision and obviously giving them the autonomy to make the best decision for their own personal healthcare. But all that has to be done in a very short snippet of time. At the end, at the end of that visit, they have to walk out knowing that I'm going to fix the problem. So coming to
Are you correlating that to the, of the clients that are the constituents that are coming?
Right, right. And so, so trying to implement that with the constituents is really challenging because in public policy, things don't happen that fast, you know? It, it, you know, multiple meetings and, you know, we've got to figure this out. I got to talk to this person. It's just very different. I think that was probably the most challenging thing that I experienced in public, in public work. Just the layers that we have to go through to get something done is definitely challenging. I, I, you know, I get it now. I've got my, I got my legs now and I know how to do it now. But it definitely was something that I had to learn. And then COVID happened, which made it even more challenging because we weren't in the same space and we were working remotely. It made, it just really created some challenges for us to execute things. But we've got a really good team now. We have really good partners. So if someone calls with a housing problem or, or just, you know, for example, we have great partners that we work with to make sure we get a voucher for them or we get resource to get an air conditioning unit for them. Or, you know, we really build, I really built a great support system of nonprofits and for-profits to help us navigate, and oftentimes, very complicated problems.
So have people come in and wanted to scream and holler and they come in with that type of, we see it all the time on, on TV, you know, people arguing and hollering at politicians? Have you had to encounter that?
You know, I don't think anyone's really hollering at me. I think they're hollering at the situation.
But you've been hollered at?
No, I really can't say that I have. I, you know, when you, when you say I've been hollered at, that means that someone is directing anger toward me. I just have never experienced that.
Okay.
If I had constituents angry, absolutely, because they want to get something done. They are tact
Done now.
And their expectations, and I don't know if they really want it done now versus do they want to understand how it can get done? Right? And so I think it's just our outlook. I, I just really look at every situation. Oftentimes, people are angry because they don't understand the process. And once you explain to them what the process is and, and, and not manage expectations, but create more realistic expectations of timing or whatever that solution may be, you'd be surprised how everyone kind of calms down. And I think that they know the heart of our at-large foreoffice. Everyone that works in my office really wants to sincerely fix the, the problem at hand. And I think they recognize that the compassion that we have and, um, the level of integrity that we have. And so we do really well with constituent services. And, and it's, yes, it's definitely challenging. Because we have people that are frustrated that have deal, but dealing with issues over and over and over again, that just haven't, um, been able to see a solution or the light of the, in the tunnel. And, and you have to remember this too. You know, most Americans, most people in the city of Houston, um, are moderately income. Like they're from moderate income base. Oftentimes people are working two jobs, lots of single family households. And so the timing that they have to deal with an issue is very limited. Because they're trying to put food on the table. They're trying to make sure they do homework with their kids. I mean, there are other things that are, are taking precedence, right, over what the issue may be. And so it's really important to be sensitive of what they're dealing with, you know, in their own personal space. And understand where that frustration is coming from and help mitigate that part. I think that's one of my strongest suits is because I'm a healthcare provider. And so people that come to me in pain, I have to understand they're not fussing at me as a doctor. They're fussing at me because they're in pain. Not, it's very, very different than what we're dealing with. And so I, I, I deal with my constituent and so does my team in the same, in the same manner.
Sounds powerful. Let me ask this question. What do you feel will be the goals and what Houston wants to achieve in the next five years? We may grow, are we already at number three in the United States? We're getting close.
Almost, yeah, we're not quite there. Yeah, we're a little short.
Los Angeles, then Chicago.
Right, yeah, we're four. We are definitely solidly number four.
Philadelphia is after us.
Right, right.
And, uh, so what do you feel that in the next five years is gonna be a, an accomplishment that we put forward?
Right, well, let me tell you what I, I, what I want to do, cause I've got some things I need to finish up in my, in my, um, you know, the things I've started. Uh, and I've got one ordinance that I really want to put through. It's called, um, Air Apartment Inspection Reform. And it focuses on the bad actors of landlords. And so people that live in apartment complexes that are mold infested, no running water, no hot water. You know, rodents in the areas or, uh, you know, poor security. You know, anything that will affect negatively the habitability of how people live, I want to fix that. And so air is a big, it's a big, um, uh, move for the city of Houston. And my goal is to get that done in some level of ordinance form, um, in my next term. I don't think I'll get all of it done in this term, maybe a phase or a portion of it. We did create a strike force, uh, that's able to deal with specific apartment complexes based on complaints. But I do wanna do something a bit more preventive, um, versus being so reactive. And so air is something that I'm looking at, um, finishing up. MCOT, uh, or CERT, the Crisis Intervention Teams that work with the city, that work with HPD. If someone's in crisis, has a mental health crisis, they don't need necessarily an armed officer. So it, so we, so I put forward to throw an amendment to make sure that we have twelve teams. And these teams are an officer and a social worker. I wanna make sure, my goal is to make sure that all those teams are built out. Cause we haven't built them out completely yet. And not because the money or the desire isn't there. It's more or less just from a staffing perspective and really making sure that we have the staff there. And that's something I want to make sure we finish. The last, uh, the other piece that's really important to me is the, uh, the issues that we're dealing with in terms of, um, food insecure areas. So lots of neighborhoods, typically BIPOC communities, Black and Brown communities, um, don't have any grocery stores that healthy food. And so, um, I'm working with the private sector to put some mobile grocery stores in communities based on, um, disparities of transportation, um, socioeconomic strength, and then the, the lack of groceries in the areas. And so those are three projects that are really near and dear to me that I've started in my first term, that I really wanna make sure we finish in our second term. Uh, and then obvi, and the final thing is the cancer cluster that's happening in the Fifth Ward, Cashmere Gardens, um, area. And so really looking to see how we can create some level of, you know, community benefits agreement for the, for the neighbors in those areas to make sure that Union Pacific really comes to the table to find out, uh, what the community wants and needs to make sure that they can continue to thrive in Fifth Ward and all those historical areas that, um, are really important to the Black community. So those are my spaces. Now, what does Houston look like? And we've gotta deal with the transportation. We need to look at transportation pretty heavily. And as you mentioned before, uh, our population base is gonna increase and is increasing very drastically. Um, I really want to see us move from such a car-centric space. Um, although I know we need our cars, but to really to change levels of ability. And that's gonna, that's gonna allow us, um, to move more with our County Climate Action Plan. Um, that we're looking, that the mayor has forcibly put forward.
I, I, I just wanna remind you and, and, and share that Houston is a big, big city and you kinda gotta drive, uh, uh, all over, uh, i- i- is to, to, the, public transportation is good and it works pretty well. But to get from this side of town to the other side of town, you kinda need a car and you mentioned climate change, you mentioned climate change.
Let me, let me comment on that just for a second. You, you're exactly right. I mean, we have to have our hearts. I mean, I get that. But I will say this, young people, young, like I'll give you an example. My son went to school in California. They ride public transportation. That's how they get around, right? And so we have to be able to have some strong infrastructure when it comes to public transportation. Because a lot of our young people, a lot of the millennials, they don't wanna get in their cars. Um, I think that's why Uber does so well, Lyft does so well, because they really just don't wanna get in cars. And so, you know, so if we could, and, and there's obviously balance, right? There's balance in every single thing that we do. Uh, we have to have development, uh, but we have to minimize the tearing down of communities in certain areas. Gentrification has to be balanced. I mean, right? And this is another example of balance. But if we can look at our transportation sector, um, and use the dollars, the, the bond money that we got, that we got from Metro and, and really strengthen that to where if nothing else, our core is able to move around effectively, not necessarily going to the lands, right? But really getting around the core of the city, getting, you know, getting to those areas. That I do believe that we can really minimize the level of pollution that we have. So that we can move more closer to our, to our climate action plan that we put in place. And, uh, and so that's, that's definitely, you know, one thing that I believe in the transportation space. I would like to see Houston have a, a department of transportation. I put that amendment, um, out about two years ago. We need, we need Hugh Dot, you know, I call it Hugh Dot. Well, but we're the, one of the only large cities that don't have a true department of transportation. Um, and so I would love to see how we can work together, all the entities come together and work more, um, effectively on that.
Metro's a private company and not part of the city, correct?
Right, exactly, exactly, exactly.
They, they probably believe that they're the Department of Transportation.
No, they don't. They understand that they're not. And we could great, I mean, let me tell you this. We have wonderful people um, at the city of Houston that manages transportation. I mean, we really have a great department. I just think that it could probably, we can look to see how we can improve it just a little bit better if we could have, you know, all the entities. You know, kind of coming together and having, um, conversations, um, a bit, a bit more effectively. Although I think we do, we do a good job. Um, so, so that's transportation. That is, uh, that is, that is housing. I mean, that is, uh, transportation and that is, uh, the climate action plan. And then the other piece we have to look at too is, is housing. You know, what are we gonna do about housing? We, our affordable housing numbers are really low. Um, as you know, rent's incredibly expensive now. As gentrification happens, we're pushing out families that have lived in communities for a long time. So, so looking at, you know, ways in which, in, in, in New York is a very good example of, of this. But you know, New York, um, people that live in the city that, um, they have fixed, they have fixed apartment, um, of, of prices, right? Uh, we need to look at how we can do that. And, and the mayor has put that forward in terms of property values for seniors. I mean, he has, uh, put that in place. But how do we do that a little more effectively for younger families that own, that have homes? Because they're not gonna be able to afford the, the property value increases as development occurs in our city. And so looking at the, so housing, right? How does housing happen? We gotta handle the situation with Harvey. Um, how are we gonna work better with glow, with HUD and making sure that people are made whole in terms of the homes that, that have been built? And I think those are our two biggest issues. Uh, Houston thrives. We are, you know, we are an oil and gas space. But we're also really smart in terms of the diverse, diversification of energy. And so that's something that's happening already. Um, and it's happening in very, very well. So I think that if we can just kind of make sure that, um, people have the basic needs and necessities, looking at our public safety. I mean, how can we look at it being more innovative on public safety? Those are, those are pieces as well. I, I'll tell you, Houston's a great city. I'm so honored to
One of the city I've lived in.
I'm telling you, I've lived in four and it's a great city. It's a great city to work, to play, um, and, uh, and to live. And I think that we, uh, if we can just take care of it together and really look at the issues that directly affect our community and listen to our communities and allow them to be a part of the conversation. And, uh, and then, and then on the flip side of it, make sure it's not so challenging to where developers can't come here and do the work that they need to do. Um, and bringing them to the table and asking how we can find balance to where development doesn't affect, um, you know, how our, how, how folks live here. I, I believe, I truly believe we could do a really great job and just make it a better city to live in.
You mentioned two challenges. You also mentioned about the, uh, Harvey situation for housing. Uh, I know there's a, what do you call it? A plan, Harvey Housing Plan. With HUD, I believe, and so forth. Are you continuing that plan? Are you making other plans like that? How has that plan worked? And then you mentioned about affordable housing, uh, throughout the community, especially in the Third Ward or different areas. There's a lot of new homes being built and then the people are, are being moved out. So wha- what is looked at in those areas?
Yeah, and that's, and that's, and that's exactly what my point is. I mean, we really have to find that balance. Cause I don't want people to be displaced. So we have to find the balance between what does gentrification look like and, um, and how do we make sure that people that are from and live in communities, how are they able to stay there? Um, and that's, that's an ongoing conversation. Um, yeah, I mean, we've got some concerns with, with, with Glow. And with, and with, really it's HUD. You know, a lot of the guidance that the GLA gets is from HUD, right? And so really working through those. And I, I am, uh, very close to the community and, and trying to figure out how we can make sure that, um, that they get the assistance that they need. And so we're working with multiple residents, uh, to become a liaison, uh, between us, between them rather, and the governing bodies to make sure that they're made whole.
Uh, this is a question that may help those displaced persons. There's a lot of apartment complexes, of course, houses that have been condemned. Put the city of, you know, uh, 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 allow groups to come in and bid on those and then allow, you know, just time to get it fixed up, different things like that. Uh, I deal off the top of my head.
No, 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 no. And that's exactly, you're, you're, you're exactly right. And that's kind of, you know, that's where those nine percent credits come in, not in that specific. Cause it's, those are typically new developments. But, but no, no, you're, I mean, you're exactly right. We don't have, unfortunately, there are some condemned apartment complexes, but you'd be surprised, most of them aren't. We don't, we, first of all, the city doesn't own any. We don't own any apartment complexes. I mean, that, that's just not our, that's not our forte. But, uh, there are incentives, there are incentives that we, the state gives to, to landlords to new owners that can go in and revitalize communities, uh, to make sure that we can, you know, uh, get those apartment complexes up to code. For sure.
Okay. We are near the end of our episode, the spotlight. Uh, I thank Dr. Latisha Plummer, but I wanna give you the platform to share with your audience, with your, uh, associates out there, people who would come and vote in the election. I wanna open it up for you to share whatever you would like to share.
Yeah, no, I, no, thank you. I, I have, you know, really enjoyed serving the city of Houston. I, I want to serve another four years. I'm up for reelection November the seventh, as you mentioned before. Please, you know, find us on Fa- on Facebook, on Instagram, on Twitter. Please go to our Houston City Council at Large Office's website to check out all of our newsletters if you wanna be engaged um, with what we do in the city of Houston and the good work that we've done. I want your support. I need your support and I would appreciate your support. I want to serve you and, um, and be your council member at large for um, in the upcoming election cycle. So thank you so much for having me. We covered lots of really great stuff. Carl, thank you for having me on the show. It's always my pleasure.
Very welcome. How can people reach you? I know you have websites, different things. You're on Facebook. Share how they could reach you. They wanna argue with you or they wanna, uh, say, why can't we do this? Why can't this happen?
Right, no, just, just, all you have to do is Google, Google Latisha Plummer and you'll find me on every single platform. Of all the handles are different. Uh, but I am at large for, so if you just type in your search bar, Houston City Council at Large for then my name's gonna pop up and all the details will be right there in front of you.
Blessings. We are live on Facebook. Uh, when we finish here, I'm gonna go through to see if there's any, uh, comments or things. And I will forward those to you. If you would put your comments on Facebook, uh, Dr. Plummer will get a chance to see them. And, uh, w- w- we look forward to her responding to you. All right?
Absolutely. Thanks again. This is so much fun and, um, I look forward to getting on with you again.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And we look forward to, uh, November seventh. Go and vote and vote for Dr. Plummer.
Thank you so much, my friend.
Thank you. We'll see you next time on the Source Seeker Hour. Thank you very much. We'll see you next time.